To redevelop this into a science park. We approached the university, got their support, their encouragement to pursue this idea. We joined the Association of University Research Parks. Who knew there was such a thing? But anyway, joined, traveled the annual conventions all over the country and participated in their training. We worked with the city of Minneapolis for redevelopment of Malcolm Avenue. You may recall, may not, that it was a dirt path when we bought the property. And for the better part of the first 10 years we owned it, there was no pavement on Malcolm Avenue. I hired a full-time employee to work simply on bringing customers or tenants to us for this Minnesota Innovation Park, which we called it. I worked with three university presidents and two university vice presidents of research. I worked with Peria, now Prospect Park Association. We helped create the state's only biozone to bring industrial and research jobs to this area. We partnered with Min Bio and Life Science Alley to promote this idea. We worked with the city on building, trying to build the Granary Road project. We hired a brokerage company to help us market the property to bring jobs. We pitched Job Z, which was brought to us by Project Z, which was brought to us by Greater MSP, which was the National Biotech Headquarters. We pitched Be The Match to be on the site, but frankly, I thought it would have been a better spot for them than where they are now. We pitched Fairview, Central Labs, and a host of other companies we tried to bring to this site. I've resisted, for the most part, the urge to accommodate people that want to do outside storage for truck trailers. Then our most popular phone call is people wanting to store stuff outdoors. We've done numerous master plans. We have finally now negotiated a memorandum of understanding with the neighborhood to support the vision we have for the site. We've helped promote the state's first innovation district, Towerside, which is passed by the city. And now, we are courting some users that are interested, but they need the infrastructure to get them in. This plan will still pursue, I want to be clear, we still have the dream, I still have the dream of bringing research-type people to this area. We're right next to the University of Minnesota. And so far, we haven't had a lot of enthusiasm or support from the university, but that's really, in order to get them here, I need a little help to get across the transway. We need to make a place that's significant, and I think this plan we have now does just that. We're creating some park space. You mentioned the food hall, very excited about the food hall. My wife's involved in that, and it's going to be a wonderful place-making piece. We do need the infrastructure, and we believe that this plan will bring more jobs and more taxes than just industrial alone. Please don't waste this opportunity to bring these jobs and the tax base to our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I stand for questions if there are any.
It doesn't look like there are any questions at the moment. Thank you. And we can move on to some other speakers. So yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Right. Thank you very much, Chair Brown and members of the commission. My name is Richard Gillyard. I live at 194 Malcolm Avenue Southeast. I've been a member of the Prospect Board of Directors for at least a decade. I've been the chair of the Master Planning Committee and one of the principals in the Prospect Park 2020 Community Development Corporation and one of the founders of the Prospect North, now Towerside Partnership. Appreciate this opportunity to talk about our vision for this district and to support the change in zoning, the change of the designation of the identified parcels from industrial to transitional industrial. I'm here to underscore today the overwhelming community support that has been developed for this specific proposal and what the law companies are proposing. And just as important, how this parcel and the proposed uses fit within the endorsed vision for the Towerside Innovation District and will, if approved, provide the energy, the momentum to drive the redevelopment that this asset-rich location deserves. Although this area has been much studied over the past several decades, reports, the stack of reports is thick. We, as a neighborhood, believe that the coming of the Green Line would trigger a flood of development. The university and the underdeveloped property that many have described would be the magnet. Our fear was that it would be a stretched version of Stadium Village along University Avenue, and perhaps it would be the science park that John has described. It's just as likely it would become the light industrial, one-story warehouses that were possible. It was our view that the existing plans failed to fully recognize and fell short of capturing the enormous potential of this one-of-a-kind location. A location next to the country's, the nation's largest research, public, inter-public research institution, crossroads of the freeways, on the Green Line between the two cities, you've heard all of that. This is an extraordinary site, and it was our determination that it was urgent to develop a crystallized vision that would fully encompass the entire district, stretching east from the stadium to Highway 280. It was our goal to reimagine this geography in terms of what's happening in industry, who we are, how we live, the types of jobs that are being created today, where work takes place, the impact of technology transfer, communication, transportation, and how employment figures in the lifestyle of city residents. We agreed with the long-held designation of this district as a terrific site for job creation, but it was clear to us that it had the potential to be much, much more. Over the course of years, over the course of two years of mind-bending meetings with the community, we determined that this place could be a rich, high-intensity assemblage of places and spaces for living, learning, discovery, as well as the arts and culture, as arts and culture. We determined it could create, provide a catalytic environment with the potential for 2,500 to 3,000 new residential units, for workforce, affordable, special needs, senior, artists, a broad spectrum serving all levels of ability and resources. Our research determined that it could provide or could accommodate several hundred thousand square feet of learning, commercial, specialty offices and studios, and could provide space for 5,000 to 6,000 new jobs, all knit together by a connecting public realm. And just as important, we envisioned that this place could be a replicable model of a sustainable, regenerative development, a community that is diverse, inviting, healthy, and beautiful. And today, through the imagination of the community, the hard work of the landowners and developers, the cooperation, support of the city, Hannibal County, the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization, the University Met Council, and the funding of McKnight, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and others, this vision is being realized. Green Forest Street is being built. The vision for that street is attracting a wide range of housing types. A signature two-acre park has been identified, running from the stationery across the old Bajer sheet metal site to the base of the United Crusher's elevators. This park needs eyes on the park. A district stormwater system is in place, and a district energy system is being planned. And dare I say, there is on the boards what we believe a workable plan for the mythical Granary Corridor, as well as the long-sought link for the Grand Rounds. The staff report calls for additional community engagement. It's really nearly impossible for me to imagine how we could have done more. This is a process that's been an engagement on steroids. It's been, over the past several years, the Master Planning Committee, the Land Use Committee, the Board of the Prospect Park Association, Prospect Park 2020, and the Prospect Park North Partnership, Towerside Partners, have met with the community on scores of occasions, over coffee in our homes, at the famously well-attended Prospect Park of board meetings, and multiple meetings at the Turner Brothers Office Building, in the Textile Center, and in the last two years, we've met twice at Surly's on a Saturday morning, and one of those mornings, it was 15 below. We had over 150 people there. This concept is strongly supported by this community. The Towerside Innovation District deserves and in fact demands the implementation of this bold vision. The Prospect Park Association understands that neighborhoods do not build cities. Neighborhoods and cities are built by developers, and it is our good fortune to have landowners and developers who share our vision and our ideals. If this high-intensity mix of uses, building types, open spaces, and people engaged in reinforcing activities has value to the city, if the purpose of the Innovation District is to be applied to this request, and if the community, and if the work of the community seeking this high level of development is respected and important, we believe now is the time to move forward. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. A couple of questions. Thank you for being here. And so I think typically, I think we would have a maybe not favorable perspective on a developer asking for this amount of significant policy change just for one site. So I think that the work that the community has done around planning this area is significant in how I'm thinking about this decision. So I wanted to ask you some questions about how this parcel fits into that context. You talked about it a bit, but one question I think a lot of us might have is, what's particular about this site that would make it the place to do a transitional district instead of the current land use classification? And another question related would be, are we to then expect that we would have a lot more developers coming in with similar applications while we're in the process of doing this bigger citywide plan update? And so I thought it would be helpful for you to offer your perspective as someone who's been involved in that community planning effort on those two questions.
Thank you. I'll try. We think this site and this request is really important because it's at the core of the district. It's at the Prospect Park Station. The entire district that we're talking about can be seen from the Prospect Park Light Rail Station. It runs to the base of the elevators. I believe that the vision has already attracted the development that we have. Green Forest is happening. I think the developers have invested in that because they see it's real. We'd like to be able to extend that. I think we've been very, very lucky. We've had landowners willing to devote the time and the dollars to participate in a district system that the payoff is long-term. But getting this first piece right at the heart of the district that involves the blank site for development, involves the park, it involves the heart of the district system to grow it throughout the district, I think it's urgent that we get this, and we don't feel we can really wait for the normal process to play out here, but the opportunity is now, and we don't want to miss it. The second is, are others going to request this? They may. I think we maybe need to figure out really what it means to have an innovation district, and how are we going to, what are the rules? And how do we, I think we'd love to be supporting the rules if we knew them. We were happy to get the designation, Innovation District, hoping we could kind of figure it out along the way. When I describe this, I say that we're going to take living, working, learning, discovery, and sort of mush it all together. Not exactly a technical term for zoning. How do we do that? What are the building types? It are hybrid building types. How do we do that? So I think we've got a lot to work to do on the process, and we'd love to work with you on that and the planning and the staff, but this is why we're pressing so hard on this today. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vince Ness. I'm the president of the Prospect Park Neighborhood Association. I live at 810 Thornton, and I'm here just to express on behalf of the Neighborhood Association our support for this plan and this change. We're usually seen as the neighborhood that says no. We're the Republic of Prospect Park, and we stand in the way of some things. We have a historic district, the largest in the state because of the activism that we have at the neighborhood. So this is an interesting case where the neighborhood is really saying yes to this and really wants this to happen. As you've heard, there's a pile of reports. There's been lots of effort and time spent, but the jobs that have been discussed over the last 15 years just haven't occurred. There's no wind in the sails over there. So at the moment, we have the right developer, the right landowner, the right plan, the right community partnership between us and PP 2020 and the Towerside Innovation District, and it is a moment we'd hate to have to lose over something as simple as a regulatory One piece I add, sometimes our neighborhood stretches from Oak Street at the University of Minnesota all the way to the southeast Como, through the middle of the railroad yards, all the way south to the River Gorge. Even our own board sometimes forgets how big and diverse Prospect Park is. We've been a lot of reform lately in Prospect Park to open the doors and get a lot more community voices. Our meetings are very well-attended. Our zoning and planning meeting has overflow seating. We are unlike some other neighborhood organizations where they get surprised by developers or they haven't heard or things happen to them. We are actively engaged and really are very blessed to have the kind of support from our developer that's unlike other groups. So on behalf of the 8,000 residents, the 400 members of our association, the 27 members of our Board of Directors, I urge you to support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Monique McKenzie. I'm the director of Campus and Capital Planning at the University of Minnesota, and I'm a resident in the city of Minneapolis. Thank you. I just wanted to speak today, not about your procedural challenge that you have in front of you, it's certainly a dense one, but I wanted to give you a little more information about the impacts. We are really the only impacted party for this very exciting move in Towerside Innovation, which is development of land that was traditionally seen as industrial. We're the only impacted landowner, not from a parcel perspective, but from a transitway service perspective. And that's really what I want to spend about three minutes respecting your time today. So I do want to say first off that we've been working extensively with this specific developer and of course, the Neighborhood Association on the core question we have in front of us, which is, and someone said it earlier, that the transitway used to be no man's land. Nothing happened over there, and now lots is happening over there. The university is certainly committed to working with the city and those adjacent landowners to define a plan for transitway crossings that meets those service requirements that we have as a campus, but also recognizing that things have changed and that demands that will emerge from development occurring on the north side of the transitway will cause us to act differently, and that's fully understood. This transitway was designed and operated in the late 1990s as a fixed guideway dedicated transit corridor. It's 2.3 miles in length. It links our Minneapolis and St. Paul campuses. The right-of-way that we are holding ranges from 60 to 100 feet in width. Generally speaking, that means we can accommodate two lanes of bus traffic and a shared cyclist and pedestrian path. What's interesting as an anecdote, in an exciting way, particularly in the segment that's a little darker on your image there, mysteriously leading up to the Surly site, our pedestrian and cyclist traffic on the transitway has become much heavier. And if we could find another place to put a second path so we didn't have to mix cyclists and pedestrians, we'd be doing that as soon as we could. The service levels on this transitway is really what I want to bring to mind for you as you consider how much you need to know about these land use changes and the impacts that will build to build out infrastructure. I also want to flag the issue of pedestrian and cyclist safety. Right now, the travel time on that transitway is about eight minutes between Como Avenue and St. Paul and 23rd Avenue in Minneapolis. That means the travel speed for our university buses is between 30 and 40 miles an hour, which is not an ideal condition for any transit vehicle in a developing or more developed urban environment. However, those speeds and those travel times are based on the idea that students do, in actual fact, transfer between classes on the East Bank and the St. Paul campus. They have 10 minutes to transfer between classes. I would say most students don't make every single class change in that timeframe. It would be exhausting, but I think we discovered the other day that we have about two-thirds of our students taking at least one class a week on the St. Paul campus. That's very true in the earlier years usually of their undergraduate experience, and they start to specialize later. But that means from a head time, or I'm sorry, a timeframe or headway perspective, is we have buses traveling particularly in this sort of intensified area every five minutes, which means a bus in each direction every two and a half minutes. So in terms of how we think about crossings, high speed, in my opinion, in terms of an urban condition, transit, increasing bike and ped traffic, especially this is the prime bike route to St. Paul, make for some conditions that we all want to be very cognizant about as development goes forward. So really, today I just wanted to highlight a few specific impacts. They are not germane to your question. They do, they are considerations under the staff report, item number six. The bottom of that page seven in the staff report notes that regardless of the decision you make about land use, these needs have to be addressed. That part of the city will change. It's essentially the last part of the city without adequate infrastructure to support any kind of land use. So these are all things that we'll all have to wrangle with. The cost will be considerable. Either things in the ground today can't support, or things just don't exist. Couple of things, though, to think about, trying to get the scale a little more focused on how individuals who hold land today can advance. There are issues right in front of us at Malcolm in the transitway. We need a traffic signal. We have about one to two near misses a week between our transit drivers and somebody, either in a vehicle or on a bike or on foot, maybe coming from Surly, just saying, trying to cross. And there's a curve, so the transit drivers need to be very alert and anticipate. We've done some things, taken landscape out, tried to, just sightlines. It's made things better, but everyone at the university is concerned about a bad situation. Second point, again, this is not germane to your business, but really important for the landowners in particular. The public right-of-way on Malcolm Avenue is consistently used by those landowners in the yard north. So you saw the aerial image with the container yard. Their yard, I think, is insufficient probably for their operations, so what happens is truck stacking Malcolm Avenue, which means the west side of Malcolm Avenue can't get the access it needs to a public street. So active management. Your city ordinance says there shall be no private use of the right-of-way for stacking, for queuing, for maneuvering. That could alleviate some of the challenges. The university has planned for a future crossing at 27th Avenue in the transitway. That's consistent with the Grand Rounds plan, which is beloved and ambitious, but it's certainly a plan that the university has recorded in its own documents. You've all referenced the need for a local street north of the transitway. That's just the cost of that land changing, no matter how it changes, but it will be significant. The only way to get across the transitway today without conflicts from the transitway service provider's point of view is to get to Malcolm, to get to a future 27th crossing or to get to 25th. The last two points I just want to mention here are really about that pedestrian movement. The excitement and the vision that's cast by Towerside Innovation is about a new way to build a city. I mean, it's not new for all the proponents, but it's new in our generation, which is not car-focused. You know, it's pedestrian travel or it's cyclist. How we can ensure until there isn't a transit service in that corridor, that those crossings are safely made, that they're intuitive, they're attractive, is really essential, especially with exciting new use prospects like a food hall. And then the last point, which again is about permitting for the future, but the university will continue to be interested in how properties that are adjacent to the transitway, what design is specified for the edge that fronts the transitway, because we don't want at-will crossings, predominantly really for that safety issue. So that's a little too much detail. Typically heard, I would expect at a permitting question, which is not what's in front of you, but I thank you for your time today.
Thank you. All right. Who would like to speak next? Yes, please state your name and address.
Chair Brown, commissioners, I'm Tom Fisher. I'm the director of the Minnesota Design Center at the University of Minnesota. My address is 89 Church Street Southeast. I'm here as a person, in some ways, representing the university on the Towerside planning that's gone on for several years. I got involved in this effort back several years ago when my research colleagues kept talking about the fact that UEL, the research incubator that the university has in this area, did not have a place for startup companies to go after they outgrew that initial incubator space, and that in fact, companies were leaving the city and unfortunately, in many cases, leaving the state and going to the coasts. And so I felt that we needed, as a community, to figure out a way to create step-up space for startup companies utilizing the research intellectual property that we were developing. We are, as others have said, we're one of the largest, not only the largest, research universities, but we're usually in the top 10 of all research universities in the country in terms of the amount of research we do. We're also one of the only research universities without an accompanying research park adjacent to it. And so we, as a region, have put all of our R&amp;D-intensive companies out of the edges. We don't have anything close to the university. So from the academic side, we see this area as absolutely crucial for us to fully leverage the research coming out of the university to develop the new kinds of jobs that are suited for a 21st century economy. As we talk to colleagues who were leaving UEL, the kinds of space they wanted wasn't simply industrial space. They kept talking about the need to have space where you could, maker spaces where you perhaps could be living close to the places you were making, and we followed what other cities have been doing with new kinds of hybrid zoning like residential industrial zones and what have you to accommodate this 21st century notion of production that might be more about 3D printing and CNC fabrication than it is in a 20th century notion of what a factory is. The other thing about this is we also felt and have found with some of our research that we tend to think of jobs as separate from residential. Over 50% of all small businesses are done out of people's homes. And so residential areas are actually job-producing areas as well. And in fact, we see this increasing in the new economy rather than decreasing. And so the idea of a more flexible zoning category for this area, we see as an opportunity for us to also put in place the kinds of live-work environments that other cities are in fact doing, and we're a bit behind on this. And then finally, I'll just make a point. One of the other things that my center is involved in with the university's involvement and many others is this is an area that is scheduled, if we get accepted by the Bureau of International Exhibitions for the Expo 2023 World's Exposition, which we will hear about in November. And so it is currently anticipated to be north of the transitway, which would be a World's Exposition attracting millions of people in 2023. And so again, as we think about the opportunities north of the transitway, I just encourage you all to be thinking about all of that other kind of activity, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
And is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, please state your name and address.
I think I'm batting cleanup. My name is John Carey. I live at 169 Malcolm Avenue Southeast in Minneapolis. I am currently a board member of PPA, and I'm also on the Land Use Committee, which does project review and zoning. I am chair of PP 2020, but in my past, I was the Prospect Park, one of Prospect Park's members on the semi-land use and planning committee back in the late 80s and into the 90s. There are three points that I want to make. One relates to the need for waiting for the 2040 comp plan. The next is, what is the appropriate zoning for this nine-acre area? And then the third is, what I would say is respect for the community engagement and planning process that we've gone through. In terms of the 2040 update, in my professional life, I was a planner for the Metropolitan Council. I specialized in growth management, land use, and transportation. I was a part of the core team in 1973, probably before most of you were born, that led to the first development framework, that led to the Metropolitan Land Planning Act, that is the origin of regional plans, local comprehensive plans, and that communication back and forth. And the major pieces that we did at that time was really try to look at growth at the edges, getting suburban growth under some sort of managed control. In the mid-1990s, I led a staff group that looked at making legislative changes to the Planning Act, and two of those pieces I think are particularly relevant. One of them was the update process, which was to put it on an annual or a 10-year cycle. Previously, there was no requirement for, once a plan had been approved by the council, Met Council, that communities needed to update it, except in response to changes in one of the major regional systems. The other part led to that the vision and plan should lead zoning. Previously, a number of communities had zoning-preempting planning when it came to what was in control. The law was changed then so that the zoning had to reflect the vision for the community and the plan for the community. In light of that, several things I'd like to say. One in terms of the update. Updates are normal under the land planning process, and they can be done in response to demographic changes, economic changes, and also in infrastructure. And the plan for this area, we have, as a neighborhood, come up with a development plan, vision, concept for the stationery, and that will And that will be, I assume, incorporated into the 2040 plan, but it really hasn't been officially a part of it. So what we're really saying is that this could be a logical, normal part of the Land Planning Act process for updating the last plan and doesn't have to wait until you go through this next process. The next part is that when we were doing the semi-plan, many of us were looking at industrial jobs as we would remember what they were 25 and 30 years ago. That is no longer the case. What we see is that companies who are really trying to employ millennials are looking at vertical rather than horizontal buildings. They want mixed use rather than single use. And they're looking for multiple types of opportunities in their employment area. So what we're looking at is a plan that would be really truly mixed use and that would be attractive to these types of developments. The next part is that in response to major regional infrastructure, the Planning Act really says that you can update your plan or should if there's new infrastructure. But Prospect Park Station and the Green Line has been a major boon to the types of redevelopment along the whole avenue, but particularly in Prospect Park. A question that Commissioner Bender raised, what, what is this area north? Well, right now, it looks like, if we view it as a circle, the southern half, we've done a lot of housing. We have New Green Forest as a greenway going through it. We have a park that is being planned. We have a district stormwater system. We have a grocery store coming and we have a variety of housing types. We have higher-cost luxury apartments. We have market-rate apartments. We have affordable apartments. We're looking at getting significant subsidy for family workforce housing by Aon. And we have senior housing coming in, which would be normal senior housing, assisted living and memory care. We will have the type of housing that the community said that they wanted, a variety of incomes and a variety of tenures. What we're looking at is how do we take the next half?